This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, City Council meeting.
All right, welcome everybody to our regular scheduled City Council meeting. I'll call it to order. It's Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, and it's 6:00 PM. Let's begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And I'll have Sandy lead the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the Common Council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a role for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchardski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
And present, we have a quorum.
All right, and so we have everybody in attendance. Dimitri is with us virtually, and you've heard his voice a couple times already, so. And then I also want to introduce staff tonight, starting on my right. We have Sandy Stibbs, our City Clerk, Aaron Jensen, City Administrator, Kathy Caza, our Finance Director Treasurer, Peg Burrington, our Librarian, Jarrett, I keep forgetting how to pronounce your last name. Raycu is our new Community Economic Development Director, second meeting for him. Tom Hart, our City Attorney, Justin Behrens, our Public Works Director, Andrew Whitman, Parks and Recreation Director, and then in place of Chief Ozeld tonight, we have Sergeant Paul Benchwell is with us, and then of course Josh is somewhere in the building tonight. And we also have one other guest that we know that's on virtual tonight too, and we'll get to him in a few minutes here. All right, knowing that, we have a consent agenda. Sandy tells me that we don't have any additions to put on to that consent agenda. Are there any items that council would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson to approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Sorry, I gotta go a little slower here. Motion carried. All right, next up, we have our regular agenda, same thing. There are no additions to it. We'd be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Both to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Chestnut, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried under non-agenda items and announcements. We have public input. If there's anybody that would like to give public input, and this would be on non-agenda items, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less. Any public input? Dave Peterson.
I would like to go back to what I brought up about a month and a half ago. With the Main Street now shut down, we have had a chance for over a month to drive behind City Hall and the library, and I haven't changed my mind one bit. I don't think it's really that safe, that convenient. We have a lot of parking spots, but I've been through there during the day, and there's delivery trucks stopped in the middle. You know, they have to have to stop somewhere to unload. And going around that little corner at the tail end there by the store is tough, especially when there's cars parked. It's not too bad when you come in tonight. So I'm still strongly in favor of either or both, one-way streets or angled parking. Thank you.
Justin and Aaron, why don't we put that on our dirt meetings for Thursday, just to talk about it? We didn't last time, so why don't we do that this time, for sure? Okay, any other public input? All right.
I'd like to.
Yeah, go ahead, Dimitri.
I'd like to piggyback on what Dave said, with a different suggestion. The intersection by First National Bank is a one-way stop, and it seems to me like, especially now during the reroute, that should be a four-way stop. The majority of the traffic seems to be going north and south, but yet the way that the stop signs work, it's kind of counterintuitive.
Good. All right, any other public input? All right, let's go to Community Department head reports, and we have Greg Gromen is on. He's the grant writer for the city, the school district, and the Chamber of Commerce, but he's going to be speaking as part of the community section that we have speak. So Greg, welcome, and go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Are you able to hear me all right?
We are.
Fantastic. That's right, so I'm Greg Gromen. I'm here tonight representing the Wapaka Area Arts and Cultural Network, providing their update. One of the things that we wanted to share with you all is an update regarding the public art project that we received with a donation from an area philanthropist. This will support the construction of a major sculptural project on Main Street. In July, the selection committee received six high-quality applications to this project in response to our public request for proposals. We've selected three outstanding candidates for further consideration, and at this time, we have met with all of those candidates and provided them with a tour of the project site, which is looking like it will be in front of the Rotary Arch on North Main Street. And at the end of this month, we'll be expecting to see detailed design concepts from all of those finalists. That might include 3D models and sketches or other digital concepts. And by the end of next month, the selection committee, including the project donor, will be recommending one of those projects for approval from the City Council. So we look forward to bringing that to you by the end of next month. Again, I think that the quality of all of these finalists is really outstanding and a testament to the strength of the artistic community in central Wisconsin. Project installation will be coordinated with the artists we select and would likely begin in the spring or summer of 2022. And the sculptural project will be completed at Arts in the Square next year in mid-August. So that is an update from the Wapaka Area Arts and Cultural Network. We look forward to bringing this project to Wapaka with the support of our philanthropist, and I think this could be a really major component of Wapaka's image and presence, a really great presence on Main Street. Thank you again for this opportunity to share this update, and thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Anybody have any questions of Greg, as long as we got him on the line yet? All right, thanks, Greg. Have a great night.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, let's go to Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Right now, my department is working in three years. We are working in 2020, 2021, and getting ready for 2022, so we are pretty busy. We are continuing to provide benefit information to our employees. Tomorrow, we're having a special program to educate the employees on their Wisconsin retirement benefit and deferred compensation programs that we have available for them. And we continue to monitor the reporting requirements for the ARPA funds. There seems to be a new webinar and press release out on a weekly basis as to what you can spend the money on and how to report how you spend the money. And we also have been issuing checks, if you can see, on a weekly basis using the CDBGCV COVID money that we received for the region, and we're over about $30,000 already out of the 1.7 million that we've gotten. So we continue to work with CAP Services on that program, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Kathy. Any questions, comments for Kathy? All right, let's go to the library. Peg.
Well, we have a new exhibit that's just opened. It's called Beyond Borders and Boundaries, and it is an artist from Colorado who has studied extensively in South America, so it's cultural art. It's really a beautiful exhibit. We encourage you to come and take a look at it. In addition to that, we're commemorating the 9/11 attack on the Twin Towers and on the Pentagon. We have a poster display that starts pretty much into the lobby, and then you'll actually move around the library clockwise around the inside of the outside wall. So we hope that you'll be able to take a look at that there. 14 posters. It's very well done, very moving. And then we have returned to mask-wearing in the library. All of our in-person program has been put on hold. We're seeing more and more, this is an area of very high transmission, and the trajectory is growing. We felt like we needed to do our part, and rather than discontinue services, we decided to mitigate with safety precautions.
All right, thanks, Peg. Anybody have any questions or comments for Peg? All right, we're not gonna skip Jarrett. We didn't this morning, so we won't this afternoon.
Happy to provide. So throughout these first couple weeks, definitely noticed some growing pains with our new zoning code. I'm sure some of you know about or have heard about. So continually kind of making notes on that, you know, where those difficulties are occurring, so we can eventually kind of come together as staff first, kind of discuss, and then eventually bring those changes to the different groups of elected officials for review and recommendation and then action. So those will be coming in front of you at some point, just as I mentioned. Building inspection, code enforcement, both have been very busy. Our code enforcement officer slash building inspector has been working, I think, very hard on all aspects. Some of the code enforcement has been slower than we would like and slower than usual. Still trying to keep up as best we can, but again, a slower process. Final note would be Presto Products. We are having a Special Plan Commission meeting tomorrow on a Presto Products addition site plan, so that will be reviewed, and a decision will be made on that tomorrow. After that, I'll take any questions if you guys have any.
All right, thanks, Jarrett. Let's go over to Public Works, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. My update can be shown on Page 5 and 6 of the packet. Starting as usual on the wastewater side, our primary sludge pumps, that was a project we accelerated because we pushed back our digester project. So we're a little late in the month for getting something together on that, but with the switch, we still think we can get this together before the end of the year, and I'll be bringing that forward to council for a recommendation probably in the next month or so. Just want to give you a heads up because it's wastewater, it's pumps, it can be a little lackluster, exciting, very exciting. One thing I had on the packet last month and wasn't able to comment on is Jesse and I met with the DNR regarding PFAS and PFOs, and if you haven't heard of them, they're kind of like the newest study or area of study for water quality. They sampled our wastewater, they looked into it, and our levels were very low, which means we just have, probably what's getting in the stream is just from consumer products. A lot of these products where these things are found can be in some food packaging. I should back up. These things, they're surfactants, which means they separate water and oil. So anywhere you can think of where you do want to keep that separate, Gore-Tex, a lot of other cleaning products, food, can be in some electronics, you know, and firefighting foam was a big one, but our firefighters have never used that type here in Wapaka. So we're very fortunate to have such a low thing or low concentration here in Wapaka, and we're just hoping that people do their education, look it up themselves, and find these products where they are in, and hopefully stray away from them, because they can be pretty nasty. Main Street, starting to look like a road finally, stage two. All the utilities are done, all the underground work, so much like stage one, we dug a hole and we filled it back in. Didn't look like we were getting very far, but that is all behind us. New sidewalk is in. We're going to be putting in new curb and gutter next week, and hopefully by the end of the week, we might see some of the concrete road going. So a lot of those things will be moving very fast now, so stay tuned for more updates. We are getting late in the year, so the daylight hours are shrinking. We're well aware of that, and we're pushing the contractors as hard as we can to keep them here, keep them going, coming with ideas on how to be efficient and get small things done, you know, in between doing the big things. Hyatt Harrison Street, which is another big road project on the horizon. We looked at a preliminary plan. We should be getting some updated plans and an estimate pretty soon here. We had considered that section of High Street just north of Highland, looking into improving that because it's very narrow, and we know a lot of people walk through there from making it to the main part of the city through to the cemetery and through and down to the parks. We're looking at expanding that section. We only have so much budget. We only have so much we can do. Most likely, at this point, we're probably going to look at a section much like Evan Street. That was a big success, so it looks like we're going to be doing something there. But more information for that project to come in the future. In Harrison Street, north of Fulton, is also tied onto that. That's going to pretty much go back the way it looks like the way it is now. Waterside, we keep adding more residential accounts, which means houses are being built, so we're seeing that in the utility side, which is great. We're replacing old meters and putting in new ones all at the same time. We are looking into our SCADA system, and that is short for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. We've had the system for quite a long time. It's proprietary. It's a little archaic. Just telling you now, it's going to be a pretty big budget item here in the future, but right now, we're just getting to the weeds of what our options are for a future replacement. The Waterside, they have a skid steer that they have on their own, separate from the street department. They're also looking into doing the lease program like the street did. It's such a good deal that they're interested in it now, and so we're probably going to follow through with that as well. Hydrant flushing, that is underway right now, so we have two guys that work from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM flushing hydrants. And this is a normal maintenance program where we have to flush the lines. We get a lot of the buildup sediment and keep our system working. We can operate our hydrants, make sure they're working, and identify any issues. They'll also be flushing starting the 27th, September 27th, through October 1st, and that'll be through normal daylight hours, so 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM, 3:30 PM, excuse me. It is common to see your water get cloudy while those guys are doing that. If they do, we just ask that you let things kind of subside, maybe flush a little water through your tap. If you have issues or concerns, reach out to the Water Department. They're there to help and kind of work through those things with you. Facility side, we received another focus on energy incentive for replacing LEDs, so pretty much all of our facilities have now been switched over to LEDs, and we're starting to see it in our electric bills. Those keep going down. And finally, on our building, our future Public Works building, did put out an RFP for a construction manager to help us out with that. We discussed that at a previous meeting. Expect to get those. Proposals are due tomorrow, and I'll be bringing those back to council next month to see how that pans out. I did want to note, there's a couple big anniversaries out there. I won't list them all, but Mark Nolenberg is at 37 years.
Yes, sir. Scott, you have a question?
Justin, can you give us an update on where in the supply chain are streetlights are for Main Street?
Last I heard is the ship date was October 4th, and I haven't heard anything otherwise, so that's what we're banking on, that they get shipped from the factory, which is in Canada, and they get here for the project before we open the road.
People have been giving me questions about how dark it is on North Main and getting darker earlier, so I'm just, hopefully we can get them in sooner than later.
As far as water quality, how are our levels of pharmaceuticals in our water? I've always kind of wondered that.
That we have not looked into. We did have that same professor that looked into our nitrate issue at 5 and 6, proposed doing a study. She was not able to get funding for it, so it never materialized, but we've thought about it, we've considered it. We haven't really pulled the trigger on it, though.
All right, everybody, go ahead.
Your Hyatt Harrison Street plans and whatnot, I think it's Andrew and his team that's doing the survey with the bike and that sort of thing.
Yep.
Are you guys working together to try and incorporate what he's finding with any plans you're going to do with Hyatt and Harrison? I would think that that might be a bike route.
I try not to listen to Andrew much, but yeah, we are. No, that's just kidding. No, we've talked about that section and a number of other sections throughout the city, and the plan is still kind of in draft form. I don't think it's going to be ready by the time we're ready, but it's certainly a section we've identified with and without the plan that we need to improve.
Okay.
Anybody else? Justin, thank you. Andrew, let's go Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on what Justin said. So yes, the plan will not be done in time for that. I've mentioned it to, I've kind of given them the next couple roads that we're working on, especially, excuse me, Elm Street coming up that we've identified. So it's part of the conversation, but it's just the timing isn't working out correctly. But Justin and I have had some conversations as far as High Street and how Evan Street went and the types of things that we'd be looking for. So I think anything we do there will be a big improvement. Other than that, just a couple things tonight. So we had Fallarama this past weekend. We cooked up some beautiful weather, and there was a lot of people there from the community and outside the community. So that's a fundraiser for Fallarama, or for Fallarama for Friends of Wapaka Parks. So that was a good community event. You may notice, if you're a user of some of our trails, and going back to this bike pad plan, we did put out some infrared counters around the community. So you see them on the trails and on the sidewalks. I believe we put out 10 of those. Those will be up for a couple weeks, so if you notice something chained to a pole, that's what those are. And we're just trying to get counts, and we're looking at places where we know are busy, but how busy are they? We're looking at places that may see development in the future, and how many people are using those at this time? And then we're looking at, you know, areas that could use some improvement, like we just talked about a little bit, and, you know, how many people are using those? So it's just part of the overall information that they gather for that. So if you see them, that's what they are. If somebody asks you about them, they're not cameras, they're infrared counters. Quick reminder that our parks, shelters, and bathrooms close on October 1st, so that's always the date every year, so people can still enjoy the parks, use the parks. The shelters are not rentable anymore, and the bathrooms will be closed at that point. We'll finish off with some good news. As you may have heard or seen out there already, I did get our tentative award agreements or letters from the DNR on the different grants that we applied for. I'm thankful that Greg didn't steal my thunder. I was hoping he wasn't going to talk about those, but we applied for three of them. Two of them were RTP grants, which are recreational trail program grants. One was for the boardwalk at Swan Park. One was for the blighted section of Trail at the Eco Park, and that's a pretty big project out there. Those are 50% grants, and we were fully funded for both of those. So we got $9,500 for Swan Park and around $34,000 to $35,000 for the Eco Park. The splash pad, which is less interesting, right? We did get some funding for that. We did not get the full 50% that we wanted, but we did receive about $335,000 from that LWCF grant for the splash pad. So we're doing very well there as far as the fundraising is concerned. Hopefully, we can finish and bridge that gap here soon and then be able to move forward on that project and start the planning process of that project. So we're very thankful to Greg and the work that he put in, as well as the Friends of Wapaka Parks. They put in some time on that as well. So very thankful to them, and I think, you know, having that grant writer has really paid off, obviously, for me at this time, so that's all I got tonight.
Thank you, Andrew. Go ahead, Colin.
We did approve, oh, what was it called? The, I'm blanking. I thought about it all day. The Civil War reenactment, but I never heard anything more about that. Did they cancel?
That is a great question. I was thinking about that the other day at Fallarama, and I will check in with the Historical Society on that, but I assume like they may have canceled due to COVID stuff at some point, but I will check into that.
Yeah, I thought it went away.
I think, excuse me.
Clearly, it didn't happen. I just knew what happened.
I went by. I think they were up there. I don't know how many people attended. I don't know, but I do believe they set up and were waiting for people.
Didn't it pour rain that day, too? Didn't it rain that day very hard?
I don't recall.
Was that, yeah, it was in August. There was one that got rained out, so maybe that was the one, so.
That's what I'm thinking.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Andrew, thank you. Paul, you want to give us the police report?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So the Police and Fire Commission met last Tuesday, the 14th. During that meeting, they approved the minutes from August 10th and also approved the expense report. The Commission was also advised about the budget for 2022 was completed with Finance Director Kathy, and it'll be coming to council for final approval. The Commission was also advised, we had purchased two squad cars that will be being delivered in the near future, I believe, early next month. Our department also ran a directed patrol in the downtown area last month between, or excuse me, yeah, between August 14th and August 21st. The specific areas we targeted were the new stop signs on Cooper Street and also the intersection of Jefferson Street and Yudkin Street, which had been kind of problematic areas. During that week, we spent just under 17 hours of directed patrol there, where 20 warnings were issued and 13 tickets. Mostly the violations were for failing to stop at the stop sign. There were six tickets issued and 17 warnings. We also did rifle training at the Conservation Club, where all the officers got to spend a couple hours out shooting on the range. It's not a required training, but fortunately, we were able to do that just to better our skills. We also approved three new policies. As you know, we're We also, um, approved three new policies. Um, as you know, we're redoing our policies and procedures. Um, these are written by, uh, Chief Hozell and the sergeants, and, um, so this last month, we did vehicle pursuits, peer support, and, um, the third one is officers in crisis. And... Last, the commission went into closed session to interview our final two, or final two candidates for the vacant police officer position. Um, with that, they had approved to offer, offer a conditional offer, um, to candidate number one, once, uh, the background investigation is complete, which, uh, Captain Helgeson is working on right now. So that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Anybody have any questions, comments for Paul? Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna note the chili cook-off that you guys had written in your, your memo, that, that, uh, I was able to attend that last year. I thought it was great, so I wanted to highlight it for anybody else that was not there or anybody watching on TV.
Yeah, that's, uh, November third, uh, six PM to eight PM.
We're not gonna hear softball results or anything like that?
Oh, yeah. Police won. It was a great game, finally. Those firemen just didn't bring it that day.
Yeah, go ahead.
Piggybacking on Colin's comment, um, last year there was, with the chili cook-off, last year there was a little bit of, uh, confusion or bottleneck in, with the, the serving of the chili. So just so the public knows, it's going to be handled differently this year where the port, it, the chili will be portioned out and people will be able to go through much more smoothly than last year. So if anybody is thinking of not coming because of what happened last year, that won't be the case this year. So I'd really encourage people to come. It's great.
All right. Thank you. Josh, you ready?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Been working on getting the technology-related equipment ready for Main Street cameras, access points. We've got stuff with lighting and audio systems, so starting to get everything configured and prepared and ready to go. So when light poles get here, we can get it all mounted. Um, most of you saw today, we're making some changes with the city email. Sandy got some communications, I think, what, State Election Commission, um, that they're... Is that who it was from? No, not that one, the one about the .gov. That was the Elections Commission. I don't know if requires the right word, but strongly, strongly urging all governments use a .gov, uh, domain, and I won't gend all that. I think everyone here saw the email or will see the email explaining why we're doing that. So making a slow transition that way, and that's meant just another layer of security, um, as far as our technology goes. Um, handed out kind of a final draft today to the department heads of the city calendar that we're gonna start, city calendar slash resident guide that we're gonna start, uh, probably, hopefully doing annually if it's well received. Um, a couple more pieces of information we'll get in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll work on getting that created and mailed out. And then finally spent a bit of time at the end of August. We did a lot of office shuffling at City Hall with staff. Um, a couple people went to the old HFH buildings, so had to get all the IT infrastructure ready there and, um, helped get offices moved. So a lot, you know, I think we've six, seven people are in different spots after shuffling all that around. Those are kinda the main highlights of the past few weeks.
Thanks, Josh. Any questions? All right, let's go to Sandy.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report can be found on pages twenty-one to twenty-three. Um, last month on my report, I put the redistricting process and timeline, and I left it on so you could, you know, review that before you learn tonight that we're done with our redistricting maps. We completed them. Um, I will have the first reading of the ordinance at October fifth and the second reading October nineteenth. Um, there's minimal changes, and I first wanted to explain, uh, the easy one. Words eleven, twelve, and thirteen are no longer. They've been incorporated into Ward Two, so now we're back to ten wards, two per Aldamanic District. And, um, another, uh, small, small but major, um, change is in Lori, Lori Chestnut's and Dimitri's Ward Four. Um, we need to follow guidelines that are set, um, by the state, and they require the ward populations to all be similar in size. So we need to be between three hundred and a thousand. So to accomplish that, um, Ward Nine was short on, on, um, population, but Ward Four had more, and they're connected. So we put two blocks from Ward Four up into Ward Nine, and those are, now Lori Chestnut is on West Union Street, so her block is safe. Um, so if you go to the right of her house, if you go, um, east, uh, South Morton Street, South Harrison Street to High Street. So those two blocks, South Morton to High Street, are now going to be up into Ward Nine, which is part of Aldamanic District Three. But those are the only changes, and, um, um, it worked out well. And Lori, I had explained everything to you earlier today, so if anybody has questions, I do have maps and I can sit down with you and show you, um, what we've worked on. And I also wanna just touch on the Badger Books. Badger Books are, um, it's an electronic poll book software that is specific to Wisconsin election practices and statutes. That what it does, it, it connects securely to each other, but they're, they're not, um, they're not connected to the interle- internet or any network outside the building. And what it does is replace the paper poll books. Um, so the Election Commission is working on a procurement process right now for purchasing, uh, eBooks, Badger Books, and then they should be able to sell them to us at a better rate. So I'm, I'm looking at that. I'm hop- I'm sorry. I'm looking at that. I'm hoping that, um, they'll get their quote in before the end of twenty twenty-one, so we have them in place and we're trained on them for the twenty-two election cycle. And then I do wanna announce that my deputy clerk, Barbara Robert, celebrated her twenty-one-year anniversary on August twenty-first. So that's, that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Sandy. Any questions or comments for Sandy? All right, Aaron, you're up.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report can be found on page twenty-four of your packet. Um, first, uh, probably everyone knows already, uh, the, we have a personnel workshop change, a budget workshop. Uh, it was supposed to be tonight, uh, for the personnel meeting. It's gonna be October fifth. Uh, we did have a gap in there in the schedule. I think that'll, uh, allow for us to come a little more prepared to talk about that, so looking forward to that. We did talk at one point about getting an ARPA workshop kinda slid in there. Uh, after talking with Mayor Smith and Kathy, we're gonna, we're definitely gonna cover that, uh, either in late October or early November. It's not necessarily pertinent to the passing of the budget, uh, but we are gonna start talking about how to most strategically spend that money and those resources for the city, uh, very soon. Um, but we'll do that in a, in a regular council agenda, um, in the thirty-minute section, section at the end of one of those meetings. Uh, continuing to look at guidance through the U.S. Treasury and webinars, and Kathy mentioned how many things have come out with that, seemingly every week there's a different one. Um, reminder on the cultural plan update. I know a couple of people are signed up for that. They've RSVP'd for this plan. Again, this is the award-winning plan from a few years ago, um, and I think it was recognized by Arts Wisconsin, and, uh, we're gonna be doing a little session at the Danes Hall on Thursday of this week. Uh, city staff is gonna work with, uh, some of the arts and culture members to help facilitate it. Uh, there are gonna be kind of a social session from five PM to six PM, and then, uh, six PM to eight PM is gonna be the actual activity and planning session. If you haven't RSVP'd yet, but wanna come, contact me and I'll forward it to, uh, the Danes Hall, who's taking care of some of those things. So just let me know. Wetland Mitigation Bank, this is something, been working with Beth, Airport Manager, about a little bit, and the county. We got approached by the county, uh, Wapak County Highway Department. They wanna do a mitigation bank. It's within five miles of the airport, which anything within five miles of the airport that could potentially create, um, greater, um, uh, populations of waterfall, uh, needs to be signed off by the airport. It's within two and a half miles. It's directly east towards Oiwega, and, uh, we've been working with the BOA, um, the USDA, uh, for guidance on how to proceed there. What we wanna do is we wanna, A, make sure that we don't create any future safety problems, or the project doesn't. So we wanna keep our airport as safe as possible, but we also don't wanna put our future funding from FAA, um, in jeopardy. So by going through this process, um, we protect ourselves from both of those things. The next steps in the River North Neighborhood Plan, um, we have sent it out to over fifteen developers. Andrew Dane has been working on that. We expect to get those RFPs back soon, so we're excited to see what, what interests we get back in the River North Neighborhood. I have Jared on here. I've been working with Jared quite a bit the last couple of weeks or his first couple of weeks, um, and, uh, he's doing a fantastic job. Um, it's a, it's a lot to learn. Uh, it's like drinking from a fire hose, and you're trying to decipher new code and, and build those relationships and meeting people and all of that, but he's, he's done an excellent job with it. He's, uh, asked questions, which is fantastic. Um, I would assume I'll be pretty heavily involved for the next month, but I can already tell he's made a lot of progress, and my duties kinda in there will wean off over the next month and a half. I'll still always be involved since that's one of the, our strategic plan hot points, but, uh, not as much as I have. We do have an RFP out for the City Attorney Prosecution Services. As you guys know, Attorney Hart, uh, did let us know that we're not going to be, or he, now he's not gonna be seeking renewal of the contract. Uh, he's actually helped kinda provide a description of the prosecution services that he's, um, that he has performed, and we've sent that out, and I, actually, this Friday, uh, we are going to review those proposals. Main Street Grand Opening Halloween Event, Justin obviously touched on that. Um, that is gonna be Friday, October twenty-ninth. Uh, I have four to six PM. We're looking at probably actually four to eight PM. We'll be bringing street closures forward at the, likely the next council meeting. Uh, we have a planning meeting on Friday with our planning group, and we're looking forward to it. Uh, we've, we've got every department involved, so Library, Police Department, Economic Development, uh, Finance, City Hall, everybody. So we'll have staff present, engaging with the community. Uh, there'll be a lot of vehicles out there. I think even an airplane is coming in, um, if we close Main Street. It's getting trailered. So kids can kinda check that out. There'll be some pumpkin displays. The Halloween event will be tied into it. Um, also, uh, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce, who's working with some businesses. Obviously, it's been a tough time for businesses throughout this time. Uh, they're gonna be coming forward with some requests to expand their license or their premise. Uh, so I know there's four interested that when the streets closed, they can kind of spill out onto the street, maybe have like a one-man band or something, so that can add to the event, too. Um, so more details to come on that. Uh, I'll stop babbling, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Any questions, comments for Aaron? Uh, you know, that October twenty-ninth event, uh, council members, I think it would be, I would try to make that event. I mean, as many council members as that we could get down there along with staff, I think would be huge. It's a, it's really a reopening of the downtown. I, I think you'll, it will be rewarding for you, but it will also be good for our, our, uh, elect, our, our constituents, too, to see us participate in that. Plus, it's gonna be a fun time. I'm still stuck on drinking out of a fire hose, though. I didn't quite get that.
Recommend not drink.
All right. Uh, thanks. Let's go on to unfinished business. Uh, we have a couple of second readings, uh, of some ordinances that, uh, we can do. Um, and the first one is ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-one. It's an ordinance amending seventeen-point-one-zero-two of the zoning district map as allowed under seventeen-point-seven-zero-zero. And this, like I said, this is a second reading of the rezoning for the Foundations of Living, which is at fourteen twenty-one Churchill Street. And Aaron, can you just, without reading the whole ordinance, just give us a brief summary of the, the, of the ordinance, and then also tell us if we've had any comments from the public on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, so this is on page fifty-seven of your packet. Uh, just a reminder, this is an ordinance that's changing the zoning, and it was a request that came forward from Foundations for Living. Um, they're being rezoned from B three, uh, to the homeless shelter overlay district, which is a newly created district that allows for this and sets standards for homeless shelters and that kind of activity within our city. Um, we have received no, uh, public input against or for. Uh, we have been working with Foundations for Living board members and staff. Actually, Jared and I met today with one of their board members, uh, to go through the site plan requirements of this change. And that's one, that's probably the one thing I would like to, uh, mention, is that this is the second reading. We'd be looking for action tonight. We recommend approval of this, um, but it will be contingent upon them meeting the site plan requirements, which will go to Plan Commission, um, in November. So basically, upon Plan Commission, um, approving their site plan, then this will kick into effect in a bit of time. So it would be looking for a motion to approve the rezone contingent upon site plan.
I just have the one question again. Um, you're calling this a homeless shelter. Could it be slashed to say warming shelter? Because your Foundations for Living is a warming shelter. Is that correct?
Yep. So there are different definitions within the homeless shelter.
Okay, I wonder that, that, that's, it's clear for them, too.
And a warming shelter would fit. Yeah. So, but who's to say in, you know, fifteen years?
Oh, right, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by, uh, Kealan, that we approve ordinance number thirteen dash two zero two one. Any discussion? Sandy O'Callaghan?
Colin Dykstra.
Hi.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Andy. Uh, next up, we have another ordinance. This is, uh, ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-one. This is an ordinance amending seventeen-point-one-zero-two of the zoning district map as allowed under, uh, seventeen-point-seven-zero-zero. And again, this is the second reading, uh, for the Peterson Brothers Property LLC at fourteen oh seven Royalty and Street and fifteen thirty-three Royal Street. And Aaron, you wanna just touch on that again?
Yep. Thanks, Mayor Smith. Um, again, this is on page seventy-two of your packet, uh, second reading. So just a brief recap, this is the rezone of, uh, what you guys would know as Peterson Automotive here in the city. They came forward with, uh, a proposal to build another structure, uh, to help be an accessory structure to their business. At that time, we realized that automotive sales weren't even allowed in the district that they were in, so we went through a rezoning process that not only cleaned that up, but also made it possible for them to build this other structure. Um, so we are going from a B five planned commercial to B three, I believe it is. Yep. And, uh, recently met with, uh, the owners of the property. Um, they're probably set to do that project in the spring. Uh, they'll come forward with a site plan review to Plan Commission sometime in the winter and break ground after that. But, uh, no comments on this, mayor or council, for or against, and it's staff's, uh, recommendation to approve this at this time.
All right. Uh, anybody have any questions or comments on that? Looking for a motion to approve?
I would make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Peterson, that we approve ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-one. Any discussion? Sandy O'Callaghan?
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, uh... Next up, now we're under new business. Next up, now we're under new business. Sorry, I can only do one thing at a time, I guess. So we have citywide recycling and refuse service. And we've been talking about making that citywide and Justin is the lead on that. So Justin, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor. My memo starts on page eighty five of the packet. Goes on for the next page eighty six and then supporting documents after that to ninety five. So we started looking into this nearly a year ago. We've had a couple of conversations here at this floor, many more in offices in city hall. So it started as just kind of an idea and then looking into other municipalities that have done this program, followed up by a survey. The survey results, which have been discussed already, also attached in here, show that nearly ninety percent of the respondents preferred us to do this. Within the city provide a single pickup within the entire survey or city, excuse me. The other information we gathered from the survey is that on average roughly thirty, thirty dollars per month is spent on both garbage and or recycling pickup on a monthly basis. That includes even the pay by the tag people, which is less than twelve bucks a month. And even the people that reported that they don't spend any money and they must just dump it somewhere else. Highest reported is roughly sixty bucks a month or more. And that's all from the survey. Provided all that information in the past on May eighteenth. And basically was at that point, we were decided, let's figure out what this means dollars and cents wise. So put an RFP together, put it out there for haulers to respond with the understanding that based on what we discussed in the survey, we asked for weekly garbage pickup and every other week recycling pickup. The totes for one of each of those was ninety five or ninety six gallon. And that it was asked that we looked into an opt out program. So we, what we did find out was we have roughly eighteen hundred residential accounts that would benefit from this. And using the numbers, I put my one final, you know, big push for this is on average, if all these accounts spend over thirty bucks a month and for a full year, the entire city spends roughly seven hundred thousand dollars on garbage and recycling pickup. If we go with this type of program, which we're looking at about fourteen bucks a month, with those same accounts, they're only spending roughly three hundred thousand. So a net impact to the community of four hundred thousand dollars for the entire area or an average savings per household of two twenty five. So with the survey, one of the questions on there was what type of savings would you like to see? And two hundred was one of the options was the most. And what we're showing here is like we have achieved that, so. So getting back to the RFP, that was put out there for public notice and bid. Scroll down to page eighty seven, that gives a summary of the the cost proposals that were received, received for. The spreadsheet has one typo that I'll note on it. So the yellow is the programs without an opt out. So that's the baseline price and we're looking at a five year contract. So they're, they do with everything in life increase over time. The orange is with an opt out program. There's an alternate bid that I asked, these guys put it together. You'll see that those numbers are higher because there is more administrative effort that is put into administering an opt out. The error is in the the second proposal segregation. So going from yellow and then it goes white and then orange. Well, the yellow is the non opt out. The white was supposed to be an extra that is an error. It's not seventeen dollars extra. What it actually is, is that second line should be the orange. So the opt out for year one on Gration would be seventeen. So follow the white line across over on that one. So excuse me for that math error there. So of the four, got some really tight bids. Gration came in as the low at twelve sixty five, followed by Harders at thirteen twenty five and then waste management in GFL at sixteen bucks for the first year. I'd like to note that there are fuel surcharges with all these contracts, not just with ours. So if the price per gallon of diesel exceeds a certain amount, there is an extra cost that would be added to the bill. You can see the details, most of them are are four, four dollars a gallon. The Gration was three fifty and after it exceeds that, then there is a percentage that is administered back to, I guess, each customer. The next page is a map that was developed to help show the extent of where all these customers were. Obviously for us to understand and then also for the RFP to help define that. So it's broken down in the single family. Duplexes are included in this condo units, but they have to be three or less. The reason why we chose that is, well, once you get up to four, then it changes from being like a residential unit to a commercial unit per zoning code. It seems like all the other municipalities followed that very closely. So we didn't want to get into the multi-family larger units because those are can be taken care of much more efficiently with just the larger dumpsters. And then the mobile home park on the north end would also participate in on this program. Then after that is just the survey again from from the past. So with the submittals and all this information together, I think this is a very good program that that the city should do. And with the information that I got, I'm making a request for council that we do approve this. So upon approval tonight, well, I'm looking for the non opt out option. Not looking for the opt out, I think that adds additional costs to the people who want to be in the program. I think it adds a lot of uncertainty as far as, you know, where's that garbage really going? Adding or providing bins of both garbage and recycling ensures that things are getting taken care of properly. And that's that's state statute that we're ensuring that's being followed. So following approval tonight, it would go into, we would go into contract with the awarded hauler. I'd be amending our ordinance, which would take a public hearing and then two readings to detail all the things that we've kind of talked about tonight. And then work with all the contractors that are in our areas to close out the accounts that are here and then make sure that we get bins to everyone that needs it and in place before January of twenty two. Finally, I need to note that the cost per account, we plan on handling through the water and sewer bills. So it'd go on, you'd see your water sewer online and then garbage service. So that cost will be shown on there. We like it that way better than going on the tax roll. Because people call and say, I'm moving into the area, I need water and sewer. Or I'm moving away or I moved into apartment, I'm moving out of apartment. So it's much easier to track and make sure that the right people are getting charged for the service. To to have our billing clerk take care of that, we need to add ten percent on top of what is listed. So you can see the lows that are there, add ten percent. And that's what we would be looking at. In that, we would create a budget item for in this next budget. That money would, well, when we go through this program and we receive the payments for the bills, would, excuse me, I take that back. Yes, we'd go in there to supplement the effort that is needed by the billing clerk to ensure that the billing is being done properly. So with all that, I will open it to questions and comments, but I'm making a request that council does award to Gration disposal recycling for five years with the non opt out.
All right, so let's through, I know you're looking at me, I just want to make sure. All council members, make sure you look at me before you just ask a question. So raise your hand if you have a question or comment so we can keep it smooth here. Lori, I saw your hand first.
Now, last night I learned that Gration is being bought out. Now, how will that contract move forward?
I've been assured and I have verbal and written writing that the the price that was submitted would still be honored for all five years.
And that is accurate though. Gration has been bought out by GFL.
Well, I don't know if it's public knowledge.
It is now.
It is now.
Well, you shouldn't have told me.
As far as I understood, yes, that's what's happening. We have some representatives in the audience if you would like to ask them questions.
Yeah, so that's a good point too. There there are representatives from Gration and GFL in the audience. And also I think someone from Harders is here tonight too. So you have the right to ask any of them questions. So if you want to, just let me know which one you want to talk to and we'll get them up to the podium. Okay, Scott, you had?
Lori asked my question, so I'm good with it.
Okay, Paul?
Couple of questions. How are you going to handle, how is it going to be handled for properties that are either vacant or only only have folks in them seasonally or things like that? Then also, can people get more than one recycling dumpster if they have heavy use?
So vacant properties are not in this program. It has to be a residential living unit. If it's their vacation home, they still get one. This program, we're through the city, the contract between the city and the hauler is one garbage, one recycling ton. It's my understanding that if you would like an additional one, you could work directly with whoever we select tonight. And work out a separate agreement.
Follow up to that question, so for in my case where I have an Airbnb that's temporarily, is a residential home that's an Airbnb, would that property get a a bin?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Alan, I'll get to you Kathy, but let's look council.
I got to be upfront on this. I'm opposed to not having an opt out. In other words, I think we should be able to opt out of this program. That being the case, if that were to happen, then Harders would be the low bidder in this case rather than Gration. And so I think that's something we have to think about. I've heard from other constituents who are opposed to not having an opt out. And so I would say that that's something that we should consider when we take this up.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead Dimitri.
I would just like to piggyback on that and say that I've had a number of constituents approach me requesting support of an opt out. And given that Harders additional cost seems very reasonable for an opt out, I'm certainly in favor of awarding Harders the contract and going with an opt out scenario. I think that with an opt out scenario, everyone wins. The people who want to opt out can still opt out and the rest of us are still going to save about fifty percent of what we've been paying on our utility bills. So I'd rather have a hundred percent winners out there than, you know, seventy five or eighty percent or whatever it is. And there's no reason why people who are not in favor of this have to suffer at all.
Okay. So if we talk about that, since they asked the question, I don't know if it's either Kathy or Justin, but if we do an opt out, we're we're proposing that if we do not do the opt out, that it would be an increase administrative fee of ten percent. But if you do the opt out, that would be more work for our administrative staff. And what did, what did you figure that would be?
I wasn't really prepared to figure that out. It would depend on how many people are opting out and what the procedure the council would require us to verify these people are opting out. I mean, you do opt out on a monthly basis? Do you opt out on a yearly basis? Do you opt out every six months? You know, I guess, you know, that that's going to drive how how much billing changes that we have for for billing these these services.
But it would be something more than the ten percent.
Than more than ten percent.
And everybody would pay that increased administrative cost. Obviously, the people that opted out would not pay it.
That's right.
So it would, it would fall on the on the people that are not opting out. Plus, the increased cost would also fall on the people that opt out, that don't opt out.
It's not going, I don't, I don't see that it's going to be a whole lot. We're looking at probably about ten to fifteen thousand dollars worth of administrative costs. So it's, you know, it's not a lot of money. But that's, we would probably look at a little bit more administrative costs for that. The other thing that I wanted to add was that this is going to be not included in the general fund operating budget. This would be a separate special revenue fund so that all of the revenues and costs associated with that would be accounted for in a separate special revenue fund. So it's not going to be commingled with our regular operating.
Good, any other council members? One, let me, let me, people that haven't talked, I'm trying to get them to let them talk first.
Okay, here's the way I read this chart. I was in favor of keeping an opt out as well. But I do see the logic of doing non opt out, which for Gration would be twelve sixty five. If you have the opt out, that's seven seventeen dollars. That's five dollars more per person per month or per unit. And you go up to Harders, they're thirteen, need my glasses here, but thirteen and a quarter, fourteen and a quarter dollar extra, that's over the twelve sixty five, it's under seventeen. But ninety percent of the people are not going to opt out, you said. So you're going to, ten percent of the people that have to pay about if they pay twelve dollars now to take a carryout, they're paying sixty five cents more a month. It's ten dollars, of course, it's two sixty five. If they just stay at twelve sixty five, otherwise you're charging, if you stay with Gration, that would be five dollars more for the ninety percent compared to sixty five cents or a buck sixty five or something for the others that opt out. If you're going to opt out, I can see going to Harders. But I think I would still be in favor of not opt out as Justin proposed it. That made sense.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mary.
Go ahead.
They've sort of clarified what I was thinking also, yeah.
Good job, Dave.
Well, we're on the same team.
Oh, I see. Except opposite corners. Colin?
I thought I knew what opt out meant, but I got a little confused maybe with what Kathy had said. I want to confirm that if if an opt out clause is taken, I don't know even who to ask this to, that person does not get garbage pickup and they do not pay anything at all. Is that what we're saying? That's the opt out clause? And then, okay, all right.
So to to do the opt out clause means that those that elected to have garbage pickup are going to pay for those people that are opting out.
Pay the administrative costs, basically.
Administrative costs plus the whatever the contract is saying to opt out.
Okay. And then if, I might continue.
Yeah, you didn't stop talking.
The number I saw, I tried to do it quickly. It looks like Gration's number you were asking, so I did it. Goes twelve sixty five, the the amount that's missing is four thirty five for the first year, four oh eight, three ninety five, three seventy five and three seventy five. Those were the amounts, I think. Those were the, the amounts, I think you're.
Yep.
So it's about four and a quarter down to three seventy-five. That's all for me.
All right, thanks Colin. Anybody else that hasn't spoke, there hasn't been any left here? Eric, go ahead.
So when this happens, is each citizen supposed to contact their current provider and then just cancel their service?
The way I understand it is if I give them enough notice, they will handle closing out all the current contracts and setting up all the new uh, or I should say accounts, excuse me, closing out all the accounts. And that uh, that's confirmation with Gration, Harders and Waste Management, I'll confirm that.
Okay.
So they would do it automatically, no additional charges. They would come up with a round-up date, get rid of the bins that are here that they lost. The ones who, the one who was rewarded would have a set-up date and drop them off.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. And then my second question is um, do both of the providers that we're talking about tonight that seem to be uh in the front-runners um pick up recycling bi-monthly, every other week?
That's correct. That's what's being proposed tonight. And that was what was detailed in the request for proposals.
Perfect, all right.
Yeah, garbage weekly, recycling bi-weekly.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Paul, you're the only one, so.
Um, I'm curious why any would, anyone would wanna opt out? If the average that they're paying is thirty-two dollars a month and they can go down to twelve, why would you wanna opt out?
May I answer that?
Hold on a second, oh, oh.
Well, that, that's all.
Okay, I, I don't, was, that was a rhetorical question, quite honestly, but uh, I think Scott had his hand on next, okay?
Well, referencing the opt-out, I was at a recycling meeting last night and apparently the city of Clintonville has an opt-out clause and they regret ever putting it in. It's been very difficult, very messy, I guess, dealing with it. And I guess I don't wanna go down that road. If you need more information, I think you can talk to Clintonville, but from what I heard, it's not a really good idea.
Well, again, that's, that's hearsay that you have, but we do have, I think Harders actually has a contract with Clintonville. So if you wanted to ask, maybe he could give you some information about that tonight, if you wanted to do that.
I just was a comment, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
Well, wouldn't you know?
Lori, go ahead.
I would, I would, my question was that because I thought it was Harders that was doing Clintonville. And I wondered um, you know, about this not ob- having that opt-out and how that was working out. And I felt like you might know that.
Okay, so let's hold on before we bring them up.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Alan, what did you wanna say?
Um, a reason I would opt out is because first of all, I don't spend thirty-two dollars a month. I spend perhaps six to nine dollars a month. Secondly, I would not wanna be pinned down to a certain day of the week where I had to head my trash out. So those are two reasons that I would opt out.
So anybody else have their hand up? I, one of the things that, the other, the other advantage of going with a garbage service in town, obviously, is one that you would have, uh, you would only have one garbage truck that would be going down your street per week instead of having three different garbage trucks going down your street. So that's another reason why we decided to, to look into a, a citywide garbage service. That's uh, and, and does it cost us, the city more money to have those trucks going down our street? Well, I'm sure it's pretty minimal, but it, but it does, you know, a little bit. So I just wanted to bring that point up too. Anybody else have any questions? Um, so if I allow you to ask questions of Harders, I'm also gonna allow you to allow the other two individuals to have the opportunity that are here tonight to talk to us about what they're thinking here too. So a little unusual, we usually don't have that um at, at the council level, but, but I think it's appropriate. So I'm gonna allow that to happen. Peg, go ahead.
Can you, can you charge an opt-out fee? If you're gonna opt out, then you have to let them know and you're charged ten dollars to opt out. And then if you're getting back in, it kind of covers that cost.
Done.
I think the statute that allows you to charge for the service is just that, that you can charge for the service.
So the answer would be no.
Yeah, I didn't say that definitively, but yes, that's what I meant.
And that's our city attorney that just said that, okay?
But if we permitted them to opt out, is that a permit fee?
Wow.
Hence my messiness, I said, you know, it gets to be convoluted here.
And we permit people to ride a bike.
Okay, so uh, it sounds like you had a question about, about opting out and, and specifically how it's working in Clintonville. So I, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, the, the individual from Harders. But if you could just step up to the podium, use the microphone please and, and uh put a smile on your face, you're on TV.
Certainly.
Okay, so.
It's on. Hi, my name is Nick Octomar and with Harders Fox Valley Disposal. And you are correct, we do service Clintonville and they do have an opt-in program. Yeah, as that Scott had said, it, it's not easy. It's not easy for the service provider or the municipality, uh, but the board continues to vote it in uh and support it, so.
Uh, as long as you're up there, do you have any comments about what we're discussing tonight? Or are you just here to hear our discussion?
Um, I do have a lot of comments. I don't know if I'm allowed to say them or not.
Well, I'll cut you off if I.
Okay. I mean, I, I understand Justin's recommendation, but there are some other things to consider. You know, as far as that fuel surcharge that's on there, I really can't quite read it 'cause it's a little, but I see that our, ours does not start until diesel hits four dollars per gallon. Um, where Gration starts when diesel hits three dollars and fifty cents per gallon. And we're not too far from off, from that right now. So that is something to consider. It also doesn't state on there like ours does. It says it would add one percent to the monthly statement for every fifteen cents that diesel crosses that four-dollar mark. Theirs is pretty vague. It doesn't even tell you what they're gonna charge you. It just says it starts at three dollars and fifty cents per gallon. So you're kind of in a gray area there. You're not, you don't even know right now what you're gonna get hit with as far as a fuel surcharge, so. Um, and it is public knowledge, they were bought out by GFL, who was the highest bidder in tonight's bid process.
Good.
Were there any questions?
Anybody have any more questions? All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so uh, we have somebody from Gration here and then also somebody from GFL. Either one of you wanna say anything?
Yes, hello, my name is Lynn Gration. This is my son Jeff. We're uh both Grations, I guess. I'm a man here since nineteen fifty-six. My father started this Gration disposal. Trucks are just a little bit, we can cut me off when we want them, but trucks are approaching four hundred thousand dollars, three fifty to four hundred for side loaders. Our company is, we bought over almost two million dollars' worth of equipment and containers since the first of the year. We needed two more trucks. We needed more money. We needed probably a couple million dollars. We merged with GFL. They let us run our site. Our company stays the same. Jeff makes the decisions. He's the president or the manager of that site. We've had six weeks worth of done because of, 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 of this thing working. My thing to even consider this was we are still gonna operate like Gration. We're not gonna be a big corporation. We're not gonna be like Waste Management. We want a family business, how we treat people like our family, and I stand strong on that. And uh, uh, GFL has said, you guys run it how you wanna run it. You hire, fire, do whatever by equipment. They, the price I can give you is because they have landfills and they're gonna put a facility in where we're gonna transfer this garbage and to, to their landfills. Harders doesn't have a landfill. We, they have, we think of seven or eight landfills, Amherst one and close. So we, we can give that offer to you. Far as the fuel charges, um, yes, it does. But what we do is our trucks fill up every day. What that gallon usage is, we'll have a meter at all report. And then we'll be, if it's four, the gallons is thirty, gallons or forty, it won't be that much, but um, we would just put that with the, with the cost of fuel. Uh, we get a discount, we buy in volume, we'll be putting in a big uh facility there for fuel. So you know, and I can't base that on pumps, our price is gonna be cheaper. And we would just pass that, all that information right on front. But I don't really see that being a, you know, a big, big deal really at this point to hang your hat on that. So um, that's all I can say if I clarified it yet. I just wanna say we're gonna still be a family operation until the day I die.
Can you, can you uh just uh maybe expound on the opt-out? Do you have contracts with any municipalities at this time?
I, I tell you, if it was, Nick was very honest about it. It's, it, it's a problematic thing. It's like, how do you, how does somebody get back in? And then when they're in it, they wanna opt out? Administration is, is gonna be, it's a horrible thing and everybody, individuals are so different, what they want along the way. It's a, I can't see it. Clintonville is, I, Nick, it's a mess. That whole thing is, it'd be, it's just, that's my opinion on it, whether it's the cheapest one or not. That is a road to disaster to go down, I think. I don't, I don't know what, how feel, but I can see one of the gentleman's points, you had a very good point about it, yes, forced, whatever. But you gotta, volume creates discounts and better pricing. And uh, plus that, you don't have stuff, people leaving stuff on a curb that opt out, that don't wanna have it. Where are they gonna take it? They still gotta take it somewhere. People make garbage, where are they gonna go? And if they don't take care of it properly, you got one nice person on the street or a bunch of them that are, you're picked up and the rest is gonna be a mess. And you would keep your city looking cleaner and it's, it's just, it's a, I mean, Alan, where can you get a truck to stop for twelve dollars a month for weekly per service? To me, I've just, I just think it's a very reasonable price. I can't get an old rusted truck to fix my dishwasher, charge me eighty-five bucks for even gets to my door. And uh, so our pricing is very good, so I'm, so I don't wanna blabber on if there's anything. I don't know if Jeff, if you had anything you wanted to say here. If there's any questions, I'll take them otherwise, I'll just sit down and be quiet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, anybody else, comments, questions? Okay, so staff or Justin's, but staff's recommendation is to enter into an agreement with Gration at the fee of, uh, the first year fee would be twelve dollars and sixty-five cents uh per month. Remembering, of course, that there will be a ten percent administrative cost added to that. And also if the uh diesel fuel cost goes above three fifty, there would be a surcharge for that also. Uh, so it would be entering into a five-year agreement with Gration. That is the recommendation from staff. Would anybody like to make a, a, that motion or any motion at this time?
Mayor, I would so move for that motion.
I would second.
Okay.
We have a motion by Paul Mayo and a second by Paul Hagan that we approve entering into a five-year agreement with uh Gration Disposal and Recycling LLC. Discussion?
Does that include an opt-out?
Uh, well, when I presented that, uh, and you based that on your motion, we're basing it on the, on the yellow part of that, no, I just lost my page here. But it was the twelve sixty-five.
Eighty-seven.
It was based on Justin's recommendation.
Yeah, based on.
Based on Justin.
Yeah, so it would be Justin's. So the answer is no, right, Paul? I wanna verify that with both Pauls. Okay. Lori, did you have?
I'm, that, that was, I, was my question also.
Alan, did you have another question? I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, um, I am not opposed to citywide trash pickup, garbage removal. I am opposed to not having an opt-out option. And so when it comes to the vote, very clearly, I will not, not support it. I would support it if there were an opt-out option.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments? Dave, go ahead.
Just a quick question, I think I know the answer, but it goes up over three fifty, six months a year, it goes back under, then the excessive use is dropped off again. Thank you.
I, you wanna say what his answer was, Dave?
He nodded, yes.
Okay, thank you, I wasn't looking, sorry, sorry. All right, uh, somebody else said they had a question.
I just, I just wanna say, given the totality of ninety percent of people appear to support this, I, I believe that it is definitely the better way to go for the non-opt-out. I just think that that's the better way to go.
All right. Anybody else?
I.
Yeah, go ahead Dimitri.
I just wanna say that I'm gonna vote no on this, but it's not because I don't support citywide contracting. I do, I think it's a great idea. I just think we should have the opt-out.
Okay. Thank you, Colin, go ahead.
As far as discussions go, I would add the point, I don't know Clintonville's uh city, but I know a lot of people and, and anyone that's contacted me, I don't know a lot of people. I know a lot of people in this city enjoy using the recycling center for their garbage. And I don't know that Clintonville has such a thing or such an opportunity. So comparing us to them might be apples to oranges. The, I've gotten a number of phone calls on this issue and all of them have supported, uh, please make it opt-out. Now, that being said, somebody advised me earlier in my time here that uh, that sometimes it's a very vocal minority. So the survey you're referring to where ninety percent of the people support this, that's, that's tough too. Uh, I, I'm, I, I think that we should really consider the, the people that enjoy taking their uh garbage to the, the recycling center. I guess that's the end of it for me.
Okay, Scott, go ahead.
Just to rebut that, I've had people tell me that, you know, they're gonna save two hundred dollars a year. And I guess the old saying is sometimes the needs of the many, which we were elected to do the totality, totality of our population, sometimes outweigh the minority. And I guess we're trying to do the best we can for the whole city of Alpaca. And I think that's where we're heading with this, with the new opt-out clause and citywide garbage, so that's my comment.
If, if I can add to that.
Yeah, go ahead Dimitri.
I, I just think it's a misnomer to suggest that by having an opt-out, that the people that are opting in are somehow not benefiting anymore because they're still benefiting substantially. Even with an opt-out, they'll be reducing their costs by about half.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mayor.
Justin, go ahead.
One more note, the recycling center will still be open to city residents. You can still do the brush leaves, mulch, compost, waste oil, tires, forgetting a few other things. You can still use those services. Obviously, your use is probably gonna go down, but those things are still there.
Would the city buy back the garbage tags that have already been purchased?
I asked that question.
What was, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Would the city buy back the garbage tags that have already been purchased?
Wouldn't they be used?
Depends on when the contract takes effect.
That's not part of this. So I, I'm gonna stop it right there, okay? Yeah, well, even if it's not, it's not part of this motion, so we, we shouldn't be talking about that. All right, anybody else? I, I've, I've, I think I've exhausted, allowed everybody to exhaust their comments and statements on that. Nobody's calling the question, but let's, let's go forward and, and, and we're gonna do a roll call vote on this. Sandy, go ahead.
Colin Dykstra?
Nay.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
No.
Scott Perchazki?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
No.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
All right. Uh, so as Justin said, there will be uh ordinance that will be coming forward in the next month and a public hearing uh to, to finalize this. Uh, good luck to you guys. Look forward to working with you and uh, yeah, all right, let's move on. all right, let's move on. All right, next up, we have resolution number 1493, 2021, and Justin, this is you still here.
Thank you, Mayor. Page 96, it's a resolution for a DNR grant. So the last time we applied for this, it was a catastrophe grant, where we received money for the last storm in July of 2019. Very similarly, we're looking for grant funds again to replenish our tree stock in the city. So it's just a formality that we need to have resolution from the council supporting this, to seek these grant funds. And I guess what we're going to be seeking is somewhere in the area of about 15,000, where we would hire out, purchase trees, have somebody else plant the trees for us, mulch, and take care of them for about a year. We have budgeted in our regular maintenance budget about three, I think it's $3,000 for trees, and that's just to purchase them, and then we have our street guys plant them. So, well, we would be able to get more trees and have somebody else do it for us, all paid for underneath grant funds through the Wisconsin DNR. So it's a great program, we want to try it again, and we need your support.
All right, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Fair, second by Chestnut, that we approve, uh, the resolution number 1493 for a cost-sharing grant from Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for the purpose of funding urban and community forestry projects to aid in species diversity and replenish trees lost to storms, disease, or pests. Any discussion? Sandra, color roll?
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up is the homecoming parade permit, and Aaron, you want, you're going to take this one?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, on page 97, you'll see an application for a parade permit for the homecoming parade. That will be on, let's see, October 8th, approximately 25 units. I did talk with Chief Hosele, who is not here tonight. I also touched base with Captain Helgason before the meeting. We talked about just replicating what happened, obviously, we're not going down Main Street this year, replicating what happened at the Fourth of July Parade, loading in the middle school parking lot area, going down Churchill Street. That is what the parade route will be advertised as, and the parade will be done when it hits Royalton Street. At that time, the parade will go right on Royalton Street and come in kind of the back door of the school facilities. So that is the plan for the Opaaca High School Homecoming Parade. Both Chief Hosele and Captain Helgason would recommended this route and recommend approval.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve this parade.
Move to approve.
Motion by Keeland.
Second.
Second by Olson, that we approve of the parade permit for homecoming on October 8th. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Against? Say no, motion carried. All right, next up, we have creation of Opaaca Online Low Income Pricing Tier. And this is Josh, I know we talked about this at a prior meeting.
So this got tabled at the last meeting, there were concerns about the race/ethnicity question on the form provided by the state. And, um, I guess just to clarify, as part of the CDBG project, our staff's going to be required to have that form filled out by any customer that's joining within the area covered by the project. And as part of our low-income pricing tier, which is, it's a separate thing, but it coincides with this program we're proposing to just utilize the data, the income data on the same form for qualification into the program, and that keeps it clean. I reached out to Jeff McCarskey, I'm probably butchering that last name. He's Dave Teal's replacement at the Opaaca County Economic Development Corporation, and that's the lead organization on the CDBG funding. They are administering the whole program. And he reached out to the state regarding the concern about the race/ethnicity question. And per the state, it is required for this type of project. When a project with, relate to CDBG funding happens, if it's, if the participants are within a defined area, census block, or a defined municipality that they already have the data on, the race/ethnicity makeup, percentage of low-income versus non-low-income, that data may not be asked on a form. With this project, participants are going to be scattered throughout multiple municipalities, multiple census blocks. They didn't say why they require the data, or how they use it, but since the participants would be scattered, it is required that that question is asked. So I guess that's the information I found out. I think the cleanest thing to do is to use the one form for the dual purpose, both for the qualification for the CDBG program, and for our low-income pricing tier. And upon the closing of the CDBG grant period, which is a two-year period, then we'd revise our low-income program, move away from this form to something different. So that's the information I received, and that's what I think is the cleanest and simplest thing for my staff and my operation to do. It keeps things clean administratively, it keeps things clean for the staff, instead of asking two different things to be filled out, or why do I, why am I, by the way, qualify for one and not the other? And I just, I think when this is done, then we review and evaluate our criteria and our process, assuming we continue the low-income pricing tier after the CDBG program closes out. Thoughts, questions?
So to make it straight, you are recommending, uh, you are recommending approval of this pricing structure using the form that's in our packet?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Hagan, that we approve of the creation of Opaaca Online Low Income Pricing Tier that's listed in your packet. Any discussion? This is a contract, so we'll take a roll call vote here.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. All right, next up, we have a request from our finance director that we extend Brown Cab, uh, service to us, operation of the Opaaca Taxi service. Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. My report is on page 104 of the packet. We are under a two-year agreement with one year, with three one-year extensions with Brown Cab for the operation of the Opaaca Taxi Service. We are proposing another, our second year extension till December 2022. The rate that we would increase to would be based on the Wisconsin Department of Transportation and the federal 5311 grant that we are under, which has the August CPIU as 5.3%. So the rate would go from 31.88 per hour to 33.57 per hour. We are looking at covering, um, about 17,000 hours with that contract extension, for a total of 5,000, 578,950, to continue to get reimbursed from our 5311 grant through the federal government and the State Department of Transportation. I need to have this rate approved.
All right, anybody have any questions? So Kathy, for us newbies on council, explain to us what, uh, explain to us what that means to the city taxpayer.
The city taxpayer is, there's nothing. We, we still continue to give only $10,000 a year in tax levies support. We use all of the fees, fares generated by the Opaaca Taxi, any outside contracts that we have with the Vets Home for services, and two grants that we get. The 5311 grant is a federal-funded grant for rural transportation services, and we also have another grant through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. So this fee increase is probably going to be covered mostly by the leftover CARES COVID, ARPA money that has been generated. But we'll just see about determining whether or not we may need to increase fares. So, um, right now, I'm not, um, I don't think that we'll have to do that. But the taxpayer will only still continue, only to contribute $10,000 to this program.
That's not quite as intimidating as half a million dollars. Thought we should say something about that. All right, uh, so Kathy's recommendation is, is that we enter into another one-year extension with Brown Cab running incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve this extension with Brown Cab. Any discussion? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Against, say no, motion carried. Uh, next up, you have License Report 1552, which is on page 110. There's actually two names on there. And again, staff is looking for, is recommending approval of these, this license report.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Fair, that we approve License Report 1552. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Say no, motion carried. All right, under Communications Recommendations of the Mayor, Jared actually alluded to this earlier, don't forget if you're on the City Planning Commission that we do have a special meeting tomorrow at 5:15, so be prompt. Be on time. And, uh, let me see, I have, I have a couple other things I wrote down. Oh, I guess I really only have one other thing, and, uh, I learned from, uh, from Aaron today, so I maybe should let him take this, he might be able to explain it better. But I think if you haven't gotten a call about a flag that's on Jefferson Street, you, you probably will hear about it, but it's, uh, it, it, it has a swear word on that flag. We didn't, you know, under our, our, our sign ordinances and stuff like that, we, we felt like we couldn't do anything about it, but it does look like we have another part of our ordinances, which is our nuisance ordinances that we can cover that with. So there is going to be a letter that's sent out to that property owner and asked that they take that down, or they will be in violation. So, uh, I don't know how many of you heard about it, I've gotten a lot of comments from the public and some council members, so I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. Anybody else have anything for the, for the meeting tonight? We would need a motion to adjourn, Paul Hagan.
Second.
Second by Alan Keeland. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried, we're adjourned at 7:45 PM. Have a great night, everybody.